The time is now 5:00 P.M. And I call this administrative meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order. At this time, you will make sure that your cellphones are silenced and make sure that you have signed in at the back of the room. So first order of business is to call for Ms. Mary Leslie. So if you're going to have the first meeting in the room, we're here to audit.
Thank you. It's good to be here tonight. I'm not told, Councilman, I'm going to spend a minute per page, so that'll be about two hours. So we'll be good. Now, just kidding about that. I do have a high-level overview to go through. And then, of course, any questions that you've already looked through the report that you had from me, I'll be happy to answer those as well. But let me just remind you that the copy of the audit report that you had in your boxes is an internal use copy. It's got a section at the back that is just for the council and the mayor and management. So if you needed a copy to distribute to someone, Chris has those, and he can get you a public use copy if you need it. So just a quick reminder on that. So I think what I'm going to do, which is going to seem a little weird, is we're going to start on page ninety and kind of walk our way back. So on page ninety, there's an easy little schedule that kind of summarizes everything from the financial statement audit and the single audit. So as a reminder, in some years when the city expands more than $750,000 in federal expenditures, you also have a single audit requirement in addition to your normal annual financial statement audit. So in those years, when we do the single audit, we get this handy little report that's on page ninety. So it summarizes both of those audits. So you'll see at the top, it summarizes financial statement audit and then followed by the federal orders. So what I'll draw your attention to is both of the lines number one that mention our opinion, and that both of those were unmodified opinions, which is the highest level assurance that we can give as auditors. You'll also note some of the items for internal control that were noted on the financial statement side. Those follow in the section two below. And all of that, I went over with Chris last week. We had a call and we met. And then I spent some time with the mayor, Chris, again today. And we walked through all the findings, all the report, all the questions that we had. So we have already had our deep brief and talked through everything as well. So then you will note in the federal section that we didn't have any findings to report this year. We did have one last year, and it was corrected during the fiscal year. So that's positive. And then also, you'll see the detail there about the federal programs that were tested as a part of our single audit. And you'll notice that we just have one major program, and that relates to the ARPA funding. Just kind of looking forward a little bit, I do expect for 9/30/24 that we will probably still have a single audit this year. And then depending on grant activity in '25, we may or may not. Kind of depends. But some of those airport grants are pretty large, so they a lot of times will cause us to get over that $750,000 threshold. But right now, the primary program that we are focused in our testing in that single audit has been the ARPA funds. So overall, high-level, unmodified opinion on financial statements and federal orders. If you'll flip back now, kind of to the beginning, let's go to page nine. This section of the report is management discussion and analysis. And what's nice and handy about it is it has a year-over-year comparison, whereas the statements that are in the meat of the report, they are just a single-year presentation. So in these comparison tables, we can see a lot of the activity for the year and talk about some of the changes and some of the positive results that this city saw. So on page nine, this is just a big overall picture of the whole primary government. So you'll see that there are two columns that's broken out into your governmental activities and your business type. So the business type, as a reminder, is EMS and the Union Central Shopping Center. So that's what's included there. And so the governmental would be everything else. So you'll see the total assets for the year in the 9/30/23 increased $2.5 million on the governmental activity side. The total primary government, $2.9 million. So some positive activity there. One thing to note is that in terms of liabilities and debt, the city kept its debt position the same as it has. No new bonds payable, no new notes payable, only pay downs during the year. And then looking forward into this year, just to note, you got about $1.1 million in debt service, and that's principal and interest that will be throughout FY '24. So strong positive position holding in the debt there. And then if you flip on page ten, this kind of gives you that operational comparison. You can see the revenue line items broken out into different sections, programming fees, general revenues. And then the expenses broken out by departments as well. So you can kind of see which areas, which line items have increases year-over-year, which have decreases. Overall, the primary government, governmental and business type, had an increase of $800,000 in revenue, which is a positive thing. And you can see that most of that is coming from those tax line items. So that's very positive as well, because those are sustainable as long as the activity and the progress of the city stays on the same track. Those are sustainable type revenue streams, not just one-time revenue streams. So then also, you'll notice down at the bottom of the page, the total expenses. Overall, year-over-year total expenses were actually down $350,000. So that is a testament to department heads and your CFO being, you know, on top of monitoring those budgets and trying to keep expenses down in a time when everything's up. So that's very positive as well. So then if you flip over to page eleven, at the bottom, this is where we take kind of a deeper dive and look just at those governmental funds. And then further back in the report, page twenty-one, is where we really can dive in and see the general fund. So the general fund is where the council, the mayor, CFO has most of, you know, the decision-making, a lot of those special revenue funds. Those monies are targeted for very specific purposes, but it's that general fund where you really can make the decisions. So the detail for the general fund, like I said, is going to be on page twenty-one. Then let's flip over. So also, after page twenty-one, on twenty-six is where you would have the detail that breaks out those business-type activities between the EMS and the Union Central. So you can see each of those individualities. They are such different types of operations. And one thing that I did want to point out is for several years, your total net position has actually been running at a deficit in the business type. And this year, we flipped back over and we're back into the positive there. So that's a good thing. And I think part of that was due to more EMS activity runs during the year and revenues being up, as well as activity that's taking place at Union Central, too. So from an overall standpoint, there was one other thing, and I'm sorry, I'm going to have to make you flip back to page eleven that I didn't mention. But I did think it was important to mention. So in the middle of the page there, I was talking about the general fund, it being the chief operating fund of the city. And one of the best-practice targets that the GFO letting talks about is having two months of operating expenditures in your spendable unassigned fund balance. So when you take a look at those numbers for the city for 9/30/23, that amount would be approximately $2.5 million. And we have $10.8 million in that line item. So that's about four times what that recommended target is. So that's a positive activity for the city as well. Okay, so that's my very high-level 30,000-foot view of this, you know, hundred-page report. So if there's any questions, then I would like to answer them in preparation.
Council members, do you have any additional questions for any of those?
Okay, so I'll mention one more thing. So in your reports, sorry, on page ninety-eight, is the required communication section. So those are the items that we are required to communicate to those churches of governments each audit. And so that's the same presentation that you seen before. Nothing new, nothing surprising in there. But I did just want to point you there. That will be where you would find the list of any audit adjustments that we posted as a result of our procedures, as well as a copy of the representation letter that your mayor and CFO signed at the end of the audit. All right. Thank you.
Page ninety-six was the items that you went over with the CFO and the mayor, right?
It would have started on page ninety, at the bottom of ninety, and then all of that after there. Yes. Yes, there are things listed from that page forward that Chris and I talked very detailed.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary.
Friend, I'd just like to comment. There's not a lot we can do about the revenue side, but these departments are heads. Chris, everybody really works hard, does a great job controlling the expense side. And I think at the end of the day, it's like a huge business.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. Whenever Mary said it was due to the fiscal responsibility of our CFO, thank you all so much for everything that you have done for us this year. Now, at this time, we will begin the public hearing for the Economic Development Agreement for a retail store. So I'm going to go ahead and open it. And then at that time, would you like us to be for?
I can do it either way.
Let me do that. Okay. So this is the public hearing for an economic development agreement for a retail store. Is there anyone here for or against?
I'll just kind of give an overview of what it's about. The owner, the Martin Del Plaza Shopping Center, is doing work on it. And for a retail shop that'll be coming in, our estimated per year revenue is about $140,000 to the city. And we're looking to do a buyback of them over a 10-year period of about $700,000, 20 to 25 jobs. And they're doing major renovation there. It's going to be like a brand-new building on the inside. So it's going to look really good. The really good thing about this is it's most of the items that'll be sold here are things you cannot currently buy Ozark. So it's where we lose a lot of revenue to veteran cities. So it's very projectable.
Is there anyone that would like to, anyone else that would like to speak for or against the economic development agreement to bring in this retail store? Okay, so at this time, I'll close that public hearing. Next item is a public hearing for the revocation of a business license for Namaste Hospitality LLC doing business as Days End. I will call this public hearing open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against the revocation of this license?
We have a presentation on behalf of the city.
Yes, sir. If you would like to speak.
Chief, are the people here from the licensed city? Not exactly a court right here. What am I to do? State your name, please, sir.
Charles Ford.
I guess we need to swear. We have two, three witnesses. If you swear, then we can tell the truth.
Do you swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, or nothing about the truth? So help me God.
Yes, ma'am.
State your name.
Charles Ford.
By whom were you employed?
City officer.
In what capacity?
The director of public safety.
How long have you held that job?
The director of public safety since January 2023. And I have been with the city since September 14, September 2021.
Right, now, prior to coming back to Ozark, to tell everyone what your assignment was with the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency?
I retired as the colonel for the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency with the Highway Patrol troops.
And how long have you been a certified law enforcement officer?
About forty-two years.
I think last Friday, I brought you some exhibits that I intend to offer today.
Yes, sir.
Would you have a chance to look through those?
Yes, sir, I have.
And based upon the exhibits in this matter, being numbered one through nine, and of your own personal knowledge, do you have an opinion as to whether continued operation of the licensed city premises, that is, the licensed premises of Days End, presents a clear and present danger to the safety of the citizens of Ozark and the visitors to our city who occupy the licensed city premises?
Yes, sir, I do.
And what is that opinion, sir?
It is my opinion that we need to revoke that certification.
And is it your further opinion that it does, the continued operation would present a clear and present danger to the safety of our citizens?
Yes, sir.
And did you have a further opinion as to whether the continued operation of the licensed city premises is detrimental to the health and safety of the public and constitutes a nuisance?
Yes, sir.
And what is that opinion?
That it will, that if it continue, it would be for public safety, a direct, serious possibility to injuries or death.
And some of the main concerns are safety. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll call you back in a few moments.
Yes, sir.
Do y'all have any questions you want to ask the chief? At this point, he's just giving an opinion.
If he's just giving an opinion, I don't have any questions to ask him.
Okay. Put his name. Okay. State your name. I need to swear your name.
Will you state your name for us?
Danny McDaniel.
Oh, all right. So tell your name, McDaniel. Do you swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, and nothing about the truth? So help me God, I do.
And state your name, please, sir.
Danny McDaniel.
And how are you employed?
I am employed with the city of Ozark Fire Department.
In what capacity?
I am, let's see, fire marshal, community risk reduction officer, fire inspector, firefighter, just whatever the city needs me to do, I'm willing to do.
And prior to this current assignment with the city of Ozark, were you employed at Fort Rucker?
I was, sir.
In what capacity were you?
I started out as a firefighter, retired as a battalion chief. Twenty years of service there. I've been a firefighter for over thirty years.
And you retired from Rucker and come home?
Yes, sir. They allowed me to come back, and I'm grateful.
On February the fifteenth of 2023, there was a occupancy inspection of the licensed city premises.
Yes, sir.
And are you familiar with that?
I am.
And I called your attention the exhibit three and four.
Yes, sir.
Could you tell me whether there were any safety concerns of the assistant fire marshal for the state of Alabama?
Yes, sir. He had several issues on this particular date as far as the exit sign illumination, fire extinguisher, the fire alarm system, smoke alarm requirements, just to name a few on that particular exhibit you're talking about.
And tell the council, what was the nature of the fire smoke detectors in the rooms? Were they working?
Some were working, some were inoperable, some didn't have any. Some, you know, had been taken down. And as of 10:10 today, we went back out there to do our due diligence. And we had reran into several issues again. We checked all of the rooms. We started out with all of the rooms. And then there were several that were in renovation and are either stored or what have you. So at that point, there was no need. I was mainly concerned about a life-safety standpoint for the rooms that were occupied. And I can tell you, there were several smoke detectors that were inoperable. While some progress was made, there were several that were still inoperable. You had renters, tenants, occupants, however you want to classify, covering up smoke detectors. You had some of them even taking them down, handing them to us outside the door. That's not what we're here for. We got to make sure that it's serviceable there. We ran into that issue. I can tell you that not one fire extinguisher is up to date. All of them was February of 2023. That's an yearly requirement. That's a yearly requirement. So you're looking at about fifteen months that those extinguishers have not been serviced. I can tell you that the alarm panel, yearly requirement, has not been serviced since August of 2022. That is the latest sticker on that alarm system. I got a picture of it.
Let me ask you this. The fire marshal, the assistant fire marshal, Mr. Lowry.
Yes, sir.
Apparently placed this licensed city on fire watch on that occasion. And later, if I've got my dates right, later at fire watch, a fire watch was extended recently on February the 29th of this year.
Yes, sir.
So it looks like we had a fire watch all the way back to July the 26th of 2023 and continues.
Yes, sir.
Today.
Right.
On the safety violations that you're talking about, are those violations of the fire code that the city of Ozark operates on?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
And that's a standard fire code?
Yes, sir.
We have the same fire code, say, that Enterprise has, or Troy, or whatever. I mean, it's a standard code adopted by the council.
Yes. I can't state for what those other cities or municipalities you're talking about, because there are different versions. They may be on the IFC 2021 or the current one, 2024. But I can tell you that no matter what year that the codes are dated, the information is the same, and it just may be moved to a different chapter. The information doesn't change.
I've tried to read through and find differences.
Yes, sir. You're not going to do it.
But this is a fire code adopted by the city council of Ozark.
Absolutely.
And is that the same fire code that other motels in this area operate?
Yes, sir.
And what kind of license does Days End have?
If I'm not mistaken, they are a, their occupancy classification is a Romeo one, residential one.
And that's a motel hotel?
That's right. Transient in nature.
Okay, and in your observations and being out there, do we have people living there?
Absolutely.
For what periods of time? Can you tell?
Well, I mean, I cannot forsay, you know, besides the people who's like working or employed there. But I can tell you, just looking and gauging, and it just, it gets to my mind that we got people that are there or standing there. And I would just be remiss if I didn't say months at a time. Because there was one particular room that I went into, and it is, it's a hazard. It had about thirty trash bags stacked up in the corner. So you don't do that in one or two days.
Right. And did you find that the one I have pictures on the wall, family picture?
Yes, sir. There were pictures, hot plates in rooms, air fryers in room, all in direct violation of a Romeo one classification.
Right. And basically, if these were apartments, they would have standards dealing with the electrical wiring that might be different from the motel. They certainly would have kitchen requirements.
Yes, sir.
And to plug in a hot plate, is that dangerous in your job?
Yes, not only is it dangerous, it may, once again, we fall back on the code. It's illegal.
It's illegal. Okay. Now, there was another inspection back in February of this year.
Yes, sir.
Were there similar violations there?
Yes, sir. Not much has changed.
Not much has changed.
Right.
And you went today.
Yes, sir.
Did you make some photographs?
Absolutely. I got about forty photos. I got a USB.
Would you pass those around? And if you kind of can stand kind of in the middle of the council and then hand it over here to Mr. Figures, and he'll pass it around.
Yes, sir.
But you hold the picture.
Oh, you want me to hold the picture? Oh, you want me to display it?
Right.
Okay, that is a.
To the couch.
This is just open. There's no outlet cover on that. This is one of the rooms. It's a maintenance room, utility room. It's trash. This is one of the doors that does not have the hardware present for it. You'll see multiple fire extinguisher pictures with dates stamped, 2023 on them. Emergency lighting that's not illuminated and barely hanging on. Alarm box that is zip-tied. Electrical room, general storage. Smoke detector has been duct taped. Another door, hardware issue. Another box that's been zip-tied. System will not reset if there is a ventilant incident. Air conditioner cover missing. No outlet, no cover. No cover. General storage. Full flared stove. Wiring issues. Chief, that full-flared stove is under. Yes, sir. This is current status on the fire alarm system. If you look very carefully, you'll see 2022 is the last time that has been validated by an extinguishing or fire alarm company. So yearly requirement according to the code. Another smoke detector duct taped. Air fryer in a room. I'm just not trying to be repetitive. Hot plate in a room. And the trash that I was talking about. You don't accumulate that in one or two days.
Madam, I'm presently offered this photograph to the others.
Accepted and accepted.
Which I have to have exhibits run through now. On the Fire Watches.
Yes, sir.
We talked about earlier. If y'all will turn to exhibit six. Now, this is a Fire Watch notice of February twenty-ninth of this year. But there was a similar one issued, as I said, in July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Would you explain what the Fire Watch procedure is?
Yes, sir. So basically, when you have been put on Fire Watch, and it used to come from the Fire Marshal out of my government, it's an assignment of a person or persons. And their sole purpose is to basically walk around and conduct rounds on the premises. You can't be a maintenance guy and on Fire Watch. You can't be a clerk and on Fire Watch.
Let me ask you.
That's your sole purpose.
And this would be because why?
Because your alarm system is not up to date. And people have to be notified in the event of emergency.
Right. So this big facility.
Yes, sir.
Has no exterior alarm system to notify.
People of an emergency.
Whether they're living there or whether they're not the guests.
Right.
So the alternative is to have a person or persons wander around?
However they choose to do it, it's a twenty-four hour job.
And is there record keeping on that?
It's supposed to be a log. They're taking, all the activity is supposed to be marked down and a signature block signing that, you know, to the best of their ability, this was performed at this time and at different intervals. We asked for this log today. They could not produce that log. They produced one back for twenty twenty-three, which is no good for me today here in May of twenty twenty-four.
So basically, they paying for somebody to walk around the motel parking lot, sniffing for smoke, wouldn't it be a lot easier to fix the doggone alarm system?
Sir, in my opinion, it would be, but you have to ask the proprietor that question.
I suppose that person would have to be paid for their service.
I don't think anybody will walk around twenty-four hours a day for free.
And so, right now, there's somebody out there supposedly doing what you just described, walking around the parking lot.
It may not be at this particular hour. I don't know what intervals they're doing it in. But at least at a minimum of every thirty minutes, somebody's supposed to walk around. You annotate it, found nothing. Same again, zero eight to zero eight thirty, roll around, and it just continues on.
What if, anything if the elders or the lessees told you about why the alarm system is not working?
Well, I asked today, and I was told why it is that the, somebody, they got a contract with somebody. I can't remember who he said. I want to say Johnson. I'm fifty-two. You have to forgive me on that. But Johnson and somebody, they got a contract. However, why it is that they may have a contract until that alarm system has a sticker on it, an update sticker, you can tell me anything, but until I see it, it's not validated. It means absolutely nothing. What's on there is twenty twenty-two.
I'm going to call your attention to the letter from the State Fire Marshal, which is exhibit four. And it notes that the motel was built more than about years ago and had a sprinkler system. And that's why the, is that why the alarm system is so important, the sound?
Oh, yeah. The audible alerts. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes.
One of these documents, I think the Fire Marshal gave the licensee forty-five days to correct the deficiencies, and then extended it another thirty days.
He did.
In your judgment, how much of those deficiencies are not fixed?
A rough guess, man, I don't know. Like I said, there were some gains. But at the end of the day, all the things that, from a life and safety standpoint, for which I've sworn to do a great job in due diligence for the citizens and those who may be coming through the City of Ozark, it's, they have not been accomplished. I mean, they've been given time after time after time after time to keep kicking the can down the road. And if there's not a hasty intervention, would be on WDAGN for the wrong reason.
All right. Thank you. Chief, if you'd come back.
Before you begin, please, Chief, just note that your swearing in is still valid as of right.
Yes, ma'am.
Did Michael Bryan, the Deputy Chief here in Ozark, write to you a recommendation concerning the continued operation of the Days Inn Hotel?
Yes, sir.
You have that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. If you will, just if you don't mind, bring those, just bring that to the record. The first, or that down to the table.
You want to pull it out?
Yes. This where it says it, yeah.
Okay.
And this is Michael Bryan, Assistant Director to his director.
Chief.
Our director.
Yeah. Okay. He writes, "Chief, I am like to bring your attention at concern issues that have been unfolding over the past two years at Days Inn Hotel in our community. During this period, police have been consistently called to investigate various criminal activities, ranging from drug-related offenses to acts of violence carried within the premises of the hotel. The frequencies and severity of these incidents have raised significant concern regarding public safety and overall well-being of our community members. It is evident that the operation of the Days Inn has become a hub of criminal activity, posing a threat to the safety and security of both guests and local residents. In light of these circumstances, it is my firm belief that the continued operation of Days Inn poses significant risk to public safety. The recurring criminal incidents, which require extensive police interventions, and the bench ventures and resources not only strain law enforcement capabilities, but also jeopardize the peace and security of our community. Therefore, I strongly agree for the necessity of shutting down Days Inn Hotel in best interest of public safety. By taking decisive action to address this issue, we can work towards creating a safer and more secure environment for all members of our community."
And you received that letter?
Yes, sir, I did.
And then, at that point, you met with me and decided that it was in the best interest of our citizens to move forward with this proceeding tonight?
Yes, sir.
And are you asking this council to revoke the business license here for issue for this current business year?
Yes, sir, I am.
To the Days Inn lessee?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That's our presentation.
Thank you, sir. So at this time, I would like to invite anyone else. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak for or against the revocation of this business license? Yes, sir. Come up and state your name for us.
My name is James Henderson.
Hi, Mr. Henderson. I'm going to go ahead and swear you in as well, would you like to? Would you like to?
Okay.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Most of y'all know me. I'm retired Deputy Chief of Police here in Ozark. My concern is, what are we going to do with the people that are living there? Our church, we do provide brand bad meals for them once a week. They're appreciative. They have nowhere to go. That's tonight we fed that motel twenty-six people. Several of those are young children. Where are they going to go? Revocation of this license and not giving some time where these people can find somewhere to go is going to be a disservice to those who are living. There are several homeless people that live in Ozark, but I have to excuse me. I just have a stroke of my thumbs. But there are several people, homeless people in this community that can't even afford to stay in the Days Inn. We're addressing that issue every day that we can. But these people in the motel, where are the, where are these little kids going to go? They don't have transportation or anything. That's my concern. We're just turning, who does it speak for?
Thank you for the comments. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak for or against the revocation of the business license?
I'd like to speak, please.
Yes, sir. Would you like to step up?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Would you like to state your name for us?
My name is Lou. Last name is Shaw.
All right. And I will go ahead and swear you in as well.
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the whole, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. And what would your commentary be on this area?
Yes, ma'am. So I currently own the Days Inn, my company. I'm the representative for Non-Stay Hospitality LLC. And the Fire Marshal, H Y, they stopped by the first time in February of twenty-eight, I mean, of twenty twenty-four. They gave us paperwork that was dated back to February twenty twenty-three. I believe that was the guy, I don't remember his name, and I want, and someone from, an officer from Montgomery. And we, I talked to them personally, and I explained to them that the previous owner, I just took over the business this year. And the previous owner hadn't paid a lot of bills pertaining to the fire alarm system. I have the old invoices, the new contract with the fire alarm system, and the paperwork that was given to me. So if you want to see, this is the new contract that I just had to make with Johnson Controls. That is the fire alarm panel system.
And I see that the contract on that is dated five fifteen twenty twenty-four?
Yes, ma'am. Here is a service request that we did for the full stations. It says that we ordered full stations, but Johnson Controls said they only had two inspectors in the whole High State area. So we don't know when they'll be able to service us. So once I got informed about the whole situation, I've been working on it. Here are the Fire Watch logs that we've been keeping, me personally and my staff.
Are they, these are the ones that were not able to be produced today?
Ma'am, I just informed them if you could wait. We were in this the paperwork that I was supposed to bring to Port today, but they had to go. So I set up calls to bring it to the hearing. And here are the previous invoices that the owner didn't pay. The previous owner didn't pay. I have a screenshot from my computer. I paid almost eight thousand dollars for the previous owner that he didn't pay. Those are all the requests. But since you can see, we're paying down money on the fire alarm system. We're doing the Fire Watch. We're trying our best at the moment.
Okay. When did you purchase the property?
It was very close to the end of last year.
So very close to the end of twenty twenty?
No, very close to the end of, yeah, beginning twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. This is the first business license we have on Non-Stay Hospitality. The previous business license was under the previous LLC.
So, so I have to ask, you didn't do any sort of due diligence on the building that you were?
We did. Everything seemed okay. The owner, he said that everything should be okay. He showed me all the paperwork, and, you know, we went ahead with it. And then on February, in the month of February, the fire department came and popped to me. I was personally present at the property. They informed us about the problems. I went ahead, purchased smoke detectors the next day. Now, the issue they're trying to say is that the smoke detectors are being taken off the wall inside rooms. I'd like to inform you that once we rent a room to guests, we do not go inside there. If they do something wrong and we find out about it, we immediately let the law enforcement know that something wrong has been going on. And we've called the law enforcement several times when we find something that's going wrong inside the rooms.
Okay. So I just have a question about some of that. So it is deemed as a transient property. We.
Yes, ma'am.
We're supposed to check in, check out.
Yes, ma'am.
And it is upon the inspections that you have people living there for long terms?
No, we do not have people living long term. We rent out, but we rent out rooms by the week sometimes. We try to rent it to mostly construction workers that are usually working on power lines or sometimes water tanks. They come in, they have a long work left, like they have about two, three weeks of work. And they say that we want a room for multiple nights, for multiple people. And they just come into the panel, they do their work, and then they leave.
But why would someone have a full-size stove and refrigerators there just to stay for?
There are a few suites in the motel. Those suites are only occupied by employees and my. and myself. We do not rent out those suites to customers ever. So we have a suite in two forty-three. My employee lives in there. We have a suite in two zero one that the laundry lady lives in. All the power to the stoves had been cut off at the breaker. There is no power to any of the stoves that are inside the rooms. Nobody's allowed to cook. We inform guests upon check-in that there's no cooking in the room, but we cannot check the bags if they have any kind of cooking equipment or not. If they do have any cooking equipment, we just inform that do not cook inside the rooms. And our breakers are so sensitive. If somebody plugs in a hot plate or something and turns it on, it would trip the breaker. We find out that they're cooking in the room, and then we simply ask and leave.
So you say you employ a cleaning lady, so this cleaning lady doesn't go into the rooms and do the service?
She does. She does every seven days. Upon their check-out day, she would go in the room. They would... She would clean the room out. She'd make sure everything is okay. If they decide to stay longer, they'd come back in the evening. They'd pay for another seven days, and then they can rent the room.
Something else that I have noticed, it does say that upon questioning that you... that... that rooms were actually being rented for time periods that instead of day-to-day.
Yes, ma'am. Like I said, we do rent rooms by the week.
So the... So for instance, can you say off the top of your head, so you've owned the build, so you've owned the property since the end of last year, and now we're in May?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you had any sort of occupants the entire time you've been there?
What do you mean?
So have you had the same occupants?
Yes, ma'am. There is one lady. She's in room one thirty-four. We've stopped collecting payment from her. We've asked her to leave the property several times because she was crossing... She was kind of going into the whole residence part of it. We tried to let her know that you need to leave. We tried to reason with her, but she just doesn't believe we don't collect any payment from her. And we tried to call the police, and they said that you guys are gonna have to go to court and evict her. So...
And because it's now being viewed as a rental situation instead of...
Yes, ma'am. But we... If we stop collecting payment, then we ask them to leave, but they refuse to leave, and therefore my employees can't use force to make somebody leave the property.
Council members, does anyone else have any questions?
I have a question, because Jill mentioned that if you're gonna have twenty-six families without housing, I mean, if they're just staying there for a night or two or a week...
Yeah, they're just staying by the week.
How's that gonna affect it, though? I mean, if that's all it is?
So it is not a situation where we rent out rooms to families to stay permanently?
What was his reasoning in it? That shouldn't be any... I mean, you shouldn't even have a problem with that if that's all that is.
If they're carrying food over to them to eat, and they don't have anything to eat, why are they still staying there week after week?
Sometimes people do stay week after week, but if they can't find a place to stay, if somebody comes to the hotel, says, "We're between apartments. Can you give us a room?" And now if they can't get a room somewhere else, if they can't get an apartment somewhere else, they are allowed to rent by multiple weeks. But you...
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Do you have children staying there that the school bus picks up?
We have one family there that does, yes. They hang there recently.
So they've been there long enough to be enrolled in school, to have the bus come and pick them up, but you're claiming that they just rent them week to week?
But ma'am, those are the children of my maintenance man.
Okay. The... So for someone to have been here long enough requesting community services, but then claiming to live there just temporarily?
My employees do live on property. I... I myself live on the property.
I have a question. It says on here there's approximately eighty rooms. How many of those are rented and how many are not lived? Are those doors or all?
Close to forty homes are under construction, under renovation, because we have to change a lot of things as per window standards, all the way from flooring to the fixtures on the wall, to the headboards, to the beds and everything.
Mr. Shaw, you state that you purchased the facility at the end of last year?
Yes, sir.
Was it December or November or...?
December.
Okay.
And then we got the business license a little later because after the purchase, I had to go to New York for some business. So as soon as I got back, I got the business license.
Yeah, that business license is dated April the twenty-fifth of twenty-four. This business license.
Just got the business?
No, I got it. I didn't get it just yet. I got it...
It was said license issued for twenty twenty-four, April the twenty-fifth of twenty-four. That's the date on this business license?
No, sir, that can't be right. I have a business license over there. If you want, I can show you a photo of it.
Yeah, another question I have is, you sent us about four or five invoices from Johnson Controls?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, one of those invoices is dated March the twenty-third of twenty-three from Johnson Controls?
Yes, sir.
Well, you were not the owner then in March, am I right?
Yes, sir.
So the previous owner was dealing with Johnson Controls. Now, it doesn't say that any was... Were paid.
Yes, sir. I had to pay all of them. I sent the paid receipt.
And these invoices are for some of the corrective action that was just noted, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Why would they not...
No.
Why would they not correct it? That's the question.
We just paid. We just got in to contact with Johnson Controls. They let me know that there can't be any service at the address.
But this is Johnson Controls from March of twenty-three. You just passed it down?
Yes, sir, the invoice.
Then we... From March of twenty-three to March of twenty-four, both of them behind us. We're in May of twenty-four now.
Yes, sir. Those are not my invoices. I paid them.
Why would you hand them out if they're not your invoices?
Because I wanted to show you that Johnson Controls refused to service us.
Since March of twenty-three, not you, but the previous owner?
Yes, sir.
Johnson Controls refused to service them since March of twenty-three, and they're still refusing to serve you in May of twenty-four?
No, sir, they're not refusing. They sent over a contract, and I paid the older...
But no corrective action has taken place. That's the problem with that.
And when you get the Days Inn to be the hotel brand, don't they have a thing they have to check off to make sure it's okay to give a Days Inn brand to a hotel? I mean, because looking at those things that I saw on there, I don't see how any hotel would put their name on that and be represented by that. I just... I don't understand that either.
Mr. Shaw, another point of reference here is that you purchased a business license for a hotel slash motel?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you understand that you are violating the law to house people for weeks and months at the time? Because you... That's not the purpose of that business license. You would need to actually take this hotel, set it up as apartments.
Yes, sir.
You see what I'm saying?
I... I agree.
You need to...
There's a lot of work you did to do that as an apartment.
You did not purchase a license for an apartment complex or... Do you see what I'm saying?
Right. I was...
So don't you feel like you are basically shorting the city? I mean, you're doing the city an injustice as well as the occupants?
That's the main thing. You need to...
You're doing it injustice to both.
It's people's lives.
You're endangering the people's lives on the one hand. On the other hand, you're not purchasing a business license for the purpose for what you are doing, what you're using the facility for. And if everyone in the city was doing that, in other words, if a restaurant was not purchasing a license, you know, then they would be wrong. You see what I'm saying? Or a clothing store, either one of them.
No, I understand that. And I was looking up the R-one license and all the laws that pertain to the R-one license, and once I looked that up, the R-one license law only pertains to the equipments inside the room. I couldn't find anything that would limit me to the number of days or number of nights. If there's a law that says that you can't rent for a certain number of nights or days, I'd like to see it.
Would you feel safe living in one of those rooms with no smoke detectors?
We have no smoke detectors.
Would you feel safe if you were living in one of the rooms yourself?
I lived there, sir.
But your room may not be as invalid as some of the tenant's room that you're housing. That's my...
So we make sure that when we check in a guest, the room is how it's supposed to be. Now, if a guest takes a smoke detector out of the wall, and unless we find out about it, we are not able to do anything about it. We can't go into a guest's rooms that they've paid for and just start checking things. The outlet photos...
Some of our officers have already testified that they have seen the condition of the rooms that tenants are in. So are you saying they're not correct in what they're telling?
No, I'm not saying they're incorrect. What I'm saying is, once we rent a room, we make sure that we rent a room that is up to standards to someone. Now, inside the room, the fire plates, not the fire plates, but the wall plates, the photos that the Fire Watch would tell you, just something as simple as the bed moving and somebody having a plug, their charger plugged in, that could take a plate off the wall or that could take a plug out of the system. And until the guest tells us, "Hey, you know, I broke your plug," how would we know to go ahead and fix it?
So you're not aware of stove being in the room or the...
No, I like to...
That plate, what... Hot plate being in the room. You're not aware of any...
Not about the hot plates, because we tell guests, every guest upon check-in, there's no cooking on the room. When we walk to property, there's anybody that has an open barbecue grill or anything, we make sure that we ask them, have them take it out, have them dispose it properly. But the hot plates is something we can't... We tell... We inform them of cooking, but we can't restrict the equipment they carry with them.
So I have a question. So you said no one checks the room until they... Until the people check out, but you only... You said you can rent for a week at a time?
Yes, ma'am.
So what were to happen? So do you have someone go in every time it renews?
Yes, ma'am. The housekeeper cleans the rooms.
Okay, so the housekeeper cleans. Can I ask about how much does it cost to live there for one week?
It costs about two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars. That's about between forty bucks a night on average.
Okay, two hundred... Two hundred?
Fifty.
Fifty to three hundred dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
So about twelve hundred dollars per month to live there? And for that, the people aren't even receiving standard safety, a standard safety umbrella for twelve hundred dollars per month?
Ma'am, that is... We're trying everything we can. I'm paying on the previous owner's bill. I have a contract set up that...
I... I do understand.
So once they come for inspection...
I understand your point of view, but also you purchased the building. You purchased the property. So unfortunately, it seems like you are going to have to correct or just be saddled with until it actually gets fixed. Because we are tasked with protecting the citizens of Ozark, protecting who lives here now, and that does include the people that you claim are living transiently at your property. So I... Does anyone else have any additional questions?
I have a few more questions. Be back.
Well, one thing I will ask before you get started, Attorney Adams, is are you paying the city lodging tax? Are you up to date on your lodging tax?
I pay Second Avenue taxes all... My sales... You mean the sales tax, right?
Right.
Yes, sir, I pay sales tax.
Right.
I pay property taxes, yes, sir, and sales tax, and sales tax, yes.
But if these are... If you're lodging people for weeks and months at the time, my concern is, are you paying the lodging tax by the day for those individuals?
Yes, sir, because the lodging tax, I believe, stops at about twenty-eight days. We renew all the check-ins in the system at seven days. So every dollar that I collect, I pay sales tax on it.
Go ahead, Attorney.
You know, I hate to make it that simple, but I'm getting the impression when you check into your motel, you give the person checking in a smoke detector?
No, we don't give anybody smoke detectors. They're in the room.
By the time you know that you're lending one that has a smoke detector, and it works.
What do you mean?
I mean, does it work?
Yes, sir, we put it in there. It works.
And you know that when you put somebody in that room?
Yes, sir. And we let them know that, please don't do anything with the smoke detector, but...
Why would anybody do something to your smoke detector?
Because they smoke cigarettes in their rooms. We let them know, but it's cigarettes, you know? If it's too hot out, they just...
So they take it down?
Yeah, they take it down and they tape it up.
All right.
I have... I have a question.
Let me... I'll do this one. Okay, who is your fire watch person?
It's me, it was Nick, and then there's Lady Susan.
Where are your records on the fire watch?
I get them...
They're right there. Go ahead.
At the top in here.
Oh, okay.
So... So Mr. Drew, so we did see those...
In the boot.
Can you swear and wrote that those were not generated today?
Yes, ma'am. We didn't invite them today.
And why did you not present them to them when they asked for them?
Oh, all we said is, "Give us time to find the paperwork," because we were gathering all the paperwork for today's meeting, and they left. So I said, "I'll just bring it to the hearing." He can ask. He can ask.
Okay. Let me introduce you. You are...
Mr. Adams. I don't like it for my character to be attacked. You can attest to this. He did not say one word to me. I was talking to you the whole time when I was asking about those logs. What did you tell me, sir?
I said, "We were getting them together." I did find the log from the previous owner in twenty twenty-three.
From the previous owner in twenty twenty-three. You also stated you should come around here and see the mess at this desk while y'all were searching for him. Did you not say that?
Yes, sir, because when we started this in probably... I'm sorry. My name is Nick. I'm the maintenance supervisor for over there. Basically, when we started this, we had to fisk through Manisha's files to find all these documents and stuff. We found the twenty twenty-three. Fire watch for this year was on the desk, but we had it all covered up with all the previous R-one city Ozark business licenses.
And just a rough guess, Mr. Nick, how patient was I and my people that were with me?
Actually, very patient. We worked with them three or four times. The first time that they actually come up to the...
Did I ever say one time I got to leave?
No, but you were sitting in the parking lot, so we were trying to hurry up to get them to you.
Okay.
And then you guys left.
And any time while I was in the lobby and outside by my vehicle, was anything produced to me?
Uh, no, sir.
I didn't... So just... I didn't have... You have one question. So one of the rules of the law is that it has to be signed every... It has to be walked every thirty minutes.
Actually, fifteen minutes if people are sleeping.
That's fifteen minutes if someone is sleeping.
Correct.
So when he was there earlier today, now I... I'm a school teacher and I have a messy desk, but I think I can find something pretty quickly if I had to sign it thirty minutes ago. And that is just my opinion.
That's...
And that...
We have thirty-two cameras. You're more than welcome to come and take...
We did it for ninety days. If you want, I can submit the city a ninety-day recording of seventy-two cameras.
Sir, let me hear you say it.
See people walk in and doing fire watch?
You, when you serve as the fire watch person, you're doing other things at the motel, aren't you?
What do you mean, sir?
You're working.
No, sir, I'm not doing the front desk.
So you're just walking around?
Yeah, I mean, I might talk to a guest.
No, I didn't say talk to a guest.
If it is myself.
When you're on our watch, you're not doing anything for the month, nor is he.
No, sir, we don't do...
So he's a maintenance man. And you put him in the parking lot, wind him around all day?
So he's the maintenance supervisor for my company. We own three hotels in Alabama, and we have a maintenance man dedicated on the property for property maintenance. He doesn't do maintenance on the property.
Okay. So can I say something?
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of assumptions going around. Basically, when we... Let's start with the rental of the hotels. So when we get a guest out, we go in there completely painted, put all the fresh paint, make sure the plumbing's working, make sure the cig is working, make sure everything is right, clean it out, decontaminate it, because sometimes people do stay a little longer, and get it rentable, basically like a house. You know, you rent your house, you pay three times the amount of rent to get into the house. You know, you rent your house, you pay three times the amount of rent to get into the house, deposit it, you know, basically that.
So you're treating it like it's an apartment?
Well, no, because it's.
And you do all of this kind of stuff?
Very good, very good.
You're getting in, ready for someone to live in.
Correct, because it's a hotel.
It's a hotel.
Okay, so let's, let's go to the hotel. We called the planning department, you know, the, the permit department, and we asked them about that law about time and about transient and about everything else. In your law for the city of Ozark and for the state of Alabama, it doesn't say anything about a given amount of time, but it has to have availability for people to rent day by day. If you'd like to, the law is actually right up there. Uh, the only classification in the twenty twenty-one Building Maintenance Code that we're talking about, that you guys are on, twenty nineteen, is that if there is a stove hooked up and working with ten items, basically kitchenware, plates, anything that's in an efficiency apartment or anything in an extended stay, we have nothing like that there. We do have a, a big refrigerator, the stoves are all disconnected, because in, I think, nineteen eighty-two, I'm not sure, I haven't been here, but in nineteen eighty-two, they had an architect come in and redo all the electric to put those efficiency apartments in, right? As per code, it just says about a stove and equipments that are inside that apartment. Nobody brings their furniture in. They do have to bring their belongings, because.
You actually just called it an apartment?
Well, no, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just telling you, it's an efficient, I'm going by words that are actually on your, I, I mean, if you'd like me to read the code, I can. Okay, so if you read the code, there's nothing about time, there's nothing about anything. And if, if you don't think we're going to clean the room and wipe the walls down and make everything brand new again, you've never stayed at a hotel. I mean, it's, 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 it has to be cleaned after somebody gets out of it, even if it's one day, two days, seven days, it still has to be cleaned. We don't offer maid service to the people that actually stay a week, because it interrupts our maid service with the dailies.
Sir, what is the name of your limited liability company?
Nonstate hospitality.
And why are you not registered on the Alabama Secretary of State's website?
It's registered in Maryland.
Huh?
Registered in Maryland.
I ask you, what was the name of your LLC?
Nonstate hospitality.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And it's registered in Maryland, as you said.
It has to be registered here, you're doing business here. This is, these are the companies, all of which have some name, similar names, they don't have your name. The fact that you're registered in Maryland has nothing to do, you have to get registered in the state of Alabama.
I have a state of Alabama business license, it's just incorporated in Maryland.
And you're not registered here? Look at it, show me, that's, that's, that's from mid-afternoon today.
I know, I'm letting you know, we are registered in Maryland, not in Alabama.
I don't care whether you're registered in Maryland or not, you're not licensed to do business in Alabama. Okay?
Do we have any additional questions for Mr. Drew?
Mr. Drew, what do you want this facility to be for you? Do you want it to be a hotel motel or do you want it to be apartment?
Well, just better keep it a hotel motel. The apartments we have, like I said, the efficiencies in the hotel, we call them suite, they're only for employees and the owner and the families of the owner when we visit. It has nothing to do with anybody renting.
You need to purchase another license for that thing.
Would you like to purchase an R two license?
So what would you like the, what would you like the council to bestow as a part of this hearing? What, what are you asking us to do?
What, what I'm asking honestly is, like I said, we've done contracts, we've paid all the bills, just give us time, let the alarm company come in, do the alarm inspection, let us get a twenty twenty-four sticker, um, let the fire department come back, do one more inspection, and if then there's any issues, um, take the business license away. But don't do this to a new business owner, just because there's problems from when I didn't even, I wasn't even in Ozark.
Why did you wait until it got to this point before you repaired and fixed the problem?
Because, sir, I, I got to know about this issue.
You had five or six months now, and you knew what the build, the business, the rooms were, I mean, when you don't have firearms, you don't have receptacle covers and stuff, if you got a maintenance man, he used to say about that, make sure they're covered and make sure they're done. I mean, just give them more time, we just, what I'm worried about is catching on fire and killing a bunch of people over there.
Can I add to that? So the alarm does presently work, because we had two fire stations pulled by little kids, and it does have an audible, it does have a flash, it does ring in the front office. It's supposed to connect to the fire department, I'm not sure if that's how they do that here, uh, but it does work. We didn't pull the alarm, because I didn't want to actually pull the alarm, because it's hard to get those simplex boxes. All the fires, all the smoke detectors that are in the room were put up by me before they even went into the place, and they're checked. From, like, there is an audible alarm. It went off two or three times because of kids pulling the alarms.
Thank you. All right. Would you like any final words before?
Yes, um, like I said, if you can give us enough time for Johnson to come out, we've paid for it, let them do one more inspection, and if it's still a hazard, I'll close the business on myself. But don't, don't take this away from a new business owner in your city, just because of somebody else's mistakes. And I didn't have five months to fix it. They came in on February twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-four. I had less than three months, and most of the issues are Johnson controlled, doesn't even have inspectors to send out. And I wasn't even aware about people not paying the bills on time, and I paid it for them.
Thank you, Mr. Drew.
Give it one more chance.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against the revocation of this business license?
Can I say something?
Yes, if you have. If you have a name for it.
Sure, Nicholas George Kopples. And I've been in building maintenance since two thousand thirty-two BJ, New York City, nine eleven survivor.
Thank you, Mr. Kopples. Do you, uh?
George Kopples.
Mr. Nick George, oh, George Kopples.
George Kopples.
I thought it was George Kopples, okay. Um, and you swear to tell the truth, which means nothing about your.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what would you like to say?
So, uh, all these issues that are coming up, uh, the crime is the biggest thing. It's centered around us, I guess, the crime?
That, that is an additional facet that we didn't, that we didn't even bring up with.
Okay, no, I just want to bring it up, because you, you showed us the calls to our facility.
Yes.
Compared to other calls in the city, Walbound, or, you know, Walmart, the homeless camp, any, any other businesses, and it was nothing compared to. What's the total calls in Ozark for a month, I'm sorry?
Well, that's, that's a, uh, that is a question for the chief. We could ask Director Ward, um, but, but also, he can, I'm sure he can give the answer, but also, even when you're speaking in comparison, when you have found some, a specific area that, that seems to be a recurring problem, which is what is being claimed here, it, it also would stand that a, that a, that not typically, unless you're having some sort of the same type of clientele, people over and over, why would that be a safety issue? Why would that be police calls that go continuously up to the same, same place?
Our property is surrounded by woods. There's woods everywhere.
So you're saying that people in the woods are causing?
Yeah, actually, they are, because if the police chief would look at some of those calls, they all came from employees, from our cameras, uh, about individuals that are coming there knocking on doors at three o'clock in the morning, you know, basically coming out of woods. I've kicked off numerous people myself. I've intervened on a lot of stuff. We do work with the police department, a lot of the officers know us there, and we're, they're more than welcome to sit over there. Apparently, the traffic stops, because we're on a major highway, every facility is going to have a traffic stop. It's a big, it's a big place, you can pull in there, safety for the officers, so you don't, you know, two thirty-one's actually very busy.
Okay, so you actually asked a question. Director Ward, would you like to speak on, speak on that?
Yeah, he threw, he threw, he threw several questions. Uh.
Yes.
First of all, for the non-call, we get very few calls, and I'm going to compare him with other hotels and motels in there, very few over the same period of time all the year. With the non-call, we went to him, probably five, everybody else combined. Some of the traffic stops that we have made was folks that was even going to the day's end or coming from day's end, which was drug cases made out of those cases. Between the domestic issues they got, they, you know, drugs is some of the main stuff going in now. Might not necessarily be the people that live there, but it's other folks that's coming in, is conducting action, and we have worked cases that folks have left their locations that was carrying drugs. So that was some of the stuff we had, uh. You know, we have a lot of folks that, that happens to pick up that have, just lack of a better term, just ODed on drugs, they got drug issues, is the reason they was transported to the hospital. But to answer his questions, when it rises to the level of how much we, the totality of everything that's going on, that is the public's sake of concern. If, if we have another, and, and they own another hotel right up the road, we don't even go to that hotel, we don't have issues. It's just the day's end, and they, they, and they own it.
Ma'am, I have something to add to this. I have something to add.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, ma'am, so, um, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but the exhibits, um, they show that there has been almost two hundred and fifty number of calls in twenty twenty-two, almost the same number of calls in twenty twenty-three, and if you see, we're almost halfway through, uh, twenty twenty-four, and there's only been sixty-four calls or sixty-five calls, and twenty-nine of them have been traffic stops. Or, so we're trying to clean up as much as we can, that is almost half the problem that, that was before us.
Well, I hope so, because if I'm paying twelve hundred dollars a month to live there, I would hope that it would be safe. Okay.
Just one closing thing for the council. If they are not registered to do business with the Secretary of State's office, I don't think they can resume the whole city of Ozark business.
Can, can I, can I, I want to add this in here, because I have personal knowledge of this. When he purchased this, State Department was to come down and spoke to whoever was in charge, I'm not sure if it was him, what they have been doing over the past few years, this was going on before I ever took over, okay? When they get to the end of their time of their non-call days to correct these problems, they would trade ownership, and it was traded with people where they all know each other, and when they did it this last time, the State Department instructed them that they would not get another continuous, they're going to hold to the deadline, because that's what they normally do when it gets close to the deadline, they swap ownership, and we just start the cycle all over again. I just want y'all to bear with me.
Mr. Drew, were you, uh, do you personally know the previous owner?
No, ma'am, I don't. I don't know the previous owner personally. I come from Opelika, Alabama. I've had a hotel over there. All I was trying to do was expand my business, um, more into Alabama. I've had a hotel in Opelika since January of twenty twenty-three. I, I do not know this owner personally.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak for or against the revocation of this business license? Okay, so with that, I will call this conference to a close. All right, there we go. Okay, next, uh, next, on tonight's administrative agenda, we will review the, uh, agenda for the five-thirty meeting. So after a council order, prayer, and pledge of allegiance, the minutes from the regular council meeting, the seventh, twenty twenty-four, will be reviewed. Council members, do you have any questions regarding those minutes? Questions or comments? Thank you. Uh, item number five is to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit. Council members, do you have any questions or comments on approving that audit? Thank you. Item number six is an authorization for the mayor to execute an economic development agreement with Markville Properties LLC for a retail store. Mayor, would you have any additional?
So they're not closing it now?
Item number seven is to approve the request for a revocation of the business license for Nonstate Hospitality. Director Ward, do you have any additional information or any additional comment or question?
No, I got pretty much finished.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any additional questions or comments?
My only concern is not, not the Saki LLC, but it's with those families that are living out there, that have no place to go, my heart goes out to them.
Any additional comments or questions from council members? Item number eight is a first reading, first reading application, zero five zero retail beer off premises only and retail zero seven, zero seven zero retail table line off premises only for Superstation fourteen LLC trading to Superstation fifteen, uh, one oh nine oh, South Florida Highway three three one. Director Ward, would you like to speak on any?
Yes, I, first, I'd like to recommend we make this a first and second reading. It is a, uh, change of, uh, name change, and, and the Polish department has no objection to approve this for first and second reading.
Council members, do you have any comments or questions about approving this for a first and second reading? Item number nine is there are ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise to Unity Fiber Golf LLC. Mayor, would you like to speak on that?
Probably not.
Or?
Yeah.
The only question I have is the rating correct three percent?
Yes.
And, and the other question I had, are they going to put up new poles or are they going to pony on somebody else's?
Pony on somebody else.
Okay.
They, they are, we have an existing contract with them already. It actually expires in three years. They contacted me, um, a couple of months ago and wanted to go ahead and redo the contract for ten years. Uh, Joey and I looked over it and said, there's no advantage or disadvantage, we're just going to let it go for three years. Uh, and then they came back with this agreement that they wanted to, because of the name change of the company to oversee the, um, Unity Fiber Golf Co.
Everybody else.
So, so we have been with them for three years already?
Oh, we've been with them for seven years. It was a ten-year agreement, and like I said, they were doing some changes and they wanted to go ahead and re-up for another ten years, and then I guess we did them, because we would have gone through that process and then have to go through this process in order to get a change. And it is a non-exclusive agreement, so it doesn't mean that, you know, we can only use them, they are just, you know, entering into a name change in order to continue the agreement.
And then because it's in consideration of ordinance, we would have to suspend the rules. Do we have any additional questions on, uh, granting that? Item number ten is a resolution declaring certain property at six seventy-six Lakeview Road a public nuisance and setting a public hearing for June fourth, twenty twenty-four at five p.m. Brett or Matthew, would you like to speak on that?
I'm Matthew Davidson, code enforcement.
Matthew Davidson, code enforcement for the city of Ozark. That Lakeview Road was supposed to be taken off. They didn't take it off.
We did take it off. We'll take it off. It's already been cut.
And if you'll just pause for one moment because item number eleven is declaring certain property two twenty seven Bermuda Street with dangerous buildings a public nuisance.
That's correct. And if you see the photos on there.
Right. Council members, do you have any questions on, on that? So item number ten has been cut. Correct, okay. All right, thank you so much. So with that, I will go out into the audience to our department heads. Department heads, are there any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Are there any comments from the floor, from anyone present on any of the agenda items this evening? Are there any comments, questions, or concerns from anyone on any subject in particular? So with that, I'll go to your final comments from the mayor.
And I hate to be so long-winded, but I've got a lot to cover. First of all, we got another hundred thousand dollar grant while we're passed. I think I sent that out to y'all. Still working on some items there to include, we're going to look at putting a new sprinkler system in there because it, it's, you know, it just looks really bad. I don't think I mentioned to y'all, but Friday before last, the ceiling fell in on a section of El Placio's during a storm. And Holly and I are working with them and not only trying to help get it repaired, but there's some possible upgrades to that building that we may do and try to do some incentive things there. Think I mentioned to y'all that we got the M sixty tank from Alabama National Guard. I'm working with people from the one three one tank battalion to get a plan together on how we're going to refurbish it. And also we're working on some signage that'll go in front of that telling, you know, why we have a tank set in Ozark. The baby box unveiling and blessing will be June the twenty fourth at two P M. And I just want to give y'all an idea of, we were concerned about why that was taking so long. Here's five stops they're doing on five baby box unveilings this week along. They're ranging from a couple of places in Indiana, Tuscaloosa in Kentucky, two in Kentucky. So I just thought that was really interesting. The USD eight building, our sewer project on two thirty one and our access road, all is going very, very well. The Civic Center, we are, we have an elevator problem that we cannot find parts for, so we're having to explore some other options to get it fixed. We're working on that. But also, we're about to start that lighting, I mean, the sound at stage rehab. And I've also asked Joey and Ozzy to just look at getting some prices on the center scoreboard and fixing it up. We're two sides of that and either side of the stage, we have screen capability to where we can, you know, do like some of the other places like when we were in Huntsville this week, where you can see from, from any place in the Civic Center. Also, in the picture I printed for y'all, we're going to be getting some prices on repainting in front of the Civic Center. Well, I mean, not the front, all the way around because it's in really, really bad shape. Just wanted you to know that. Flower Center, when we did the demo on the backside of that building, there's a couple of other pictures there that you'll see of what we're going to be exposing. So I've asked Ozzy to start getting some prices up on removing all those vines, repairing some of the plywood issues and us repainting that backside. That is the view that you have if you're at our swimming pool. So just wanted y'all to remember we're working on that. And that one picture that is a vacant lot, we're looking at limbing those trees, maybe putting some signage up for overflow parking and flowers when we have Eagle Stadium, Civic Center, Flower Center events and cleaning that up to make a huge market spot. The hangar that I mentioned to y'all last meeting, we wouldn't, wouldn't say who it was, but we have rented a corporate hangar. We're in the process of putting the lease together. It's going to be a five years lease with bondies forward. They've already put, both of them will notice that they're moving. It'll be two jets and a plane that will be staged in our, our new corporate hangar. And we believe that's going to open the door for a lot of other opportunities. We're still waiting on our new, our design, on our new mural that we hope to have pretty soon. Talked with Alabama Power today. They do have a new program where they're putting cameras up. And Ozzy's putting together a list of all the locations and we'll ask other departments as well. And we're going to meet with them. They're going to give us a price that where we can have cameras on parks, you know, delay at different places to maybe keep track of what's going on. The, if you happen to look at the landscape around the airport side, rhyming them, how that is the words we just had got to it. We have a reception scheduled for August twelfth at the Holman House for the new incoming General Gil. Y'all need to put that on your calendar.
Is it August twelfth?
Yes. And our charging stations, I want to give you this information. It's doing, it's working exactly like we had planned. The ones downtown, we're averaging from nineteen to twenty charges per month. And it's holding those cars captive for two point four hours per charge. So they're having to hang out, hang out around downtown and spend money. And just to give you an example, I bill on that last month was seventy seven dollars. So, so it's working just like we planned for it to. Today, I had the opportunity to visit with a guy that very positive upscale restaurant possibility. We'll talk more about that later on. And you should have had in your box a Memorial Day program on, late the twenty seventh at the D A V building. And I think that's all I got.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Infiger? Councilman Jackson?
I'd just like to see better communication between the city and the school board because there was a conflict with our Alabama Legal Municipality meeting in graduation. And I think we owe it to these kids and their parents to be present for graduation. So I'd like to see some coordination between.
Thank you. As soon as, as soon as we got their face for the day, sir, I sent it to Adam.
Thank you.
Councilman Peralta?
And for us, I just want to thank the city for sending us to the Alabama League Municipality Convention. There actually is a new hospital that is going to possibly make it a requirement for your elected leaders to have their continuing education and their professional development. But I would like for the citizens to take, to take comfort that we actually have voluntarily gone because we want to be up to date and we want to be able to serve you as best as we can. And now it's actually going to become possibly a rule that every elected leader is going to have to do that anyway. So we are, but we are actually ahead of the game on that. So I just wanted to send, send a thanks to everyone for making that possible for us. And yes, there was a conflict and, and so, but that will not happen again.
And we should also note that we're represented at the state level in the wire grass by our old mayor of City of Dalton Marks Ali.
We are, we are.
As the president of the state legal municipality.
Okay, so with that, I will call this meeting to a close and we will open the next meeting in three minutes. Okay, I call this meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order. We will open this evening with a word of prayer from Councilman Peralta and the pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Blanket.
Mayor, yes. Forward, just thank you for the state that you made for us, Lord. We ask that you bless the city, all of our citizens, Lord, and bless our work as we work for the citizens here tonight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the highest court of the great history of our world.
Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we will review the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on May seventh, two thousand twenty four. What are the wishes of the council?
Now, President, I move to approve the minutes from the regular council meeting held on May seventh, two thousand twenty four as presented.
Thank you, sir. I do have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Thank you. Do we have any further comments on approving the minutes for the regular council meeting? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is to set the agenda for this evening. What are the wishes of the council?
President, you got to go with that.
I present, we've set the agenda, but we have to take off ten, number ten on here. And we need for adoption. Suspend, suspend on, yes, on number nine. And then we add a second reading to number eight.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Do we have any further comments on approving the agenda as amended? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five is to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty three audit. What are the wishes of the council?
Now, President, I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty three audit.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving the audit? All in favor of approving the fiscal year two thousand twenty three audit, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is an authorization for the mayor to execute an economic development agreement. What are the wishes of the council?
Now, President, I move to authorize the mayor to execute an economic development agreement with Martinville Properties LLC for retail store.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving this authorization? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is an approval of a request for the revocation of the business license, Namaste Hospitality LLC doing business as days in. What are the wishes of the council?
Now, President, I move to approve, make a motion to approve the request for revocation of business license for Namaste Hospitality LLC doing business as days in, move for adoption.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on revoking this business license? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Extending. Yes, we have one extension, two approvals, and I will, I will vote aye as well. So motion passes. Item number eight is a first and second reading application for some retail beer and retail table wine off premise, off premises. What are the wishes of the council?
Now, President, I'm, I'm, I'm just making a motion to approve the first and second reading for retail off beer premises of, applicable to Superstation fourteen LLC, move for adoption.
Thank you. I do have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving this first and second reading application? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine is consideration of an ordinance, but in order to do that, we have to suspend the rules. So what are the wishes of the council?
Now, President, I move to suspend the rules to consider an ordinance.
Thank you. I do have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on suspending the rules? All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number nine is an aura, consideration of an ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise to Unity Fiber Golf Co. LLC. What are the wishes of the council?
Now, President, I move to approve an ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise to Unity Fiber Golf Co. LLC.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion regarding this ordinance? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Item, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number ten is a resolution declaring certain properties at two twenty seven Bermuda Street with dangerous buildings a public nuisance. What are the wishes of the council?
Now, President, I introduce a, introduce a resolution to parent certain properties at two twenty seven Bermuda Street with dangerous building a public nuisance, move its approval.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So for, with no further business, I'll go to final comments. Mayor? Councilman Infiger? Councilman Jackson?
Good.
Councilman Peralta?
Yes.
And the only thing I have to say is I hope that everyone has a same Memorial Day to thank you to all of those that laid down their lives for our freedoms. So with that, I will call this meeting to a close. Meeting adjourned. No, I can't do that because I have to have a motion to adjourn.
I'll write a motion to adjourn.
Oh, my goodness. It's that in the ear, like in the ear, you think, okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. All right, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion on adjourned? All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I call this meeting adjourned.